The working session of July 15th, 2021. And if I could ask Mr. Vice Chair, do you denounce this, please?
This meeting is being recorded by the recording clerk for record keeping. Is there anyone else present who wishes to record the meeting? Who may already in fact be. Uh, the attendees of the meeting, uh, there is a sign in sheet being circulated. The board asks that you please sign in to indicate your attendance at today's work session. That's a lot shorter now, isn't it?
I know. No governor's announcement. So for those in the viewing audience who are all at home at this point, I just wanted to review the process that we're going to be taking to conduct the town administrator's evaluation. So Kevin provided to us his accomplishments, and this is a review for the last year and a half. This is the first one that we've had with him. And so tonight is going to be a verbal evaluation, and we're going to have each select board member provide feedback to Kevin, and I'll explain that in just a moment. After tonight's verbal evaluation, each select board member will fill out a job evaluation, a written job evaluation that will be sent to Debbie. She will consolidate all of those, and that consolidated document will be reviewed at our Monday board meeting on July 26th. We will review that for the public. We will discuss it, and then the board will take a vote on the evaluation. And following that, the select board and Kevin will then sign the evaluation. So tonight, we're going to go around the room, and each select board member will have an opportunity to provide feedback to Kevin, both on what he did well, and there was much of that, Kevin, and areas that they would suggest to look into further development during the fiscal year. So this is an opportunity to recognize Kevin's accomplishments and to help him continue to grow in his role as town administrator. At the end of going around and having each select board member speak, we can have some open discussion if there are any other comments or questions or input that people would like to provide. And then I'd like to give Kevin the opportunity to share with us any recommendations that he would have to improve our working relationship, any suggestions where we could help him do his job better, any way we might recommend or he might recommend changing. So Kevin, I'd like to give you an opportunity, if you would like it, to just start us off with a few opening comments, if you have any.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just really wanted to say thank you for the opportunity. It's been eighteen, nineteen months since I came on board as the town administrator of Topsfield. And it's just been an absolutely amazing opportunity for me personally. And one of the things I've, I think I said during the interview process was I come in here every single day, give a hundred and ten percent, try to leave everything I got out there, do the best I can for the town, represent you folks well, trying to make you proud with the work we're doing, the work I'm doing, the work the team's doing. And, um, but again, that, the opportunity is what I just can't thank this group enough for. And the partnerships that we've explored over the year and a half. We've had, you know, some of the focus points for me has been cohesive team, meeting, listening, and learning from the community, stakeholders, helping to support and drive the downtown revitalization, creating operational efficiencies as best as possible. Within the organization, ensuring fiscal positions and budgeting have been transparent and effective, being innovative as often as possible, and making thoughtful and appropriate decisions during the times of uncertainty. And obviously, this past year has been very uncertain, COVID. But I just want to say a big thank you to the team, especially and the select board for the leadership and partnerships throughout that pandemic that continues today. But a lot of the really difficult times hopefully are behind us. But our team absolutely rose to the occasion and did an absolute top-notch job throughout that, which was obviously a super incredible focus for us last year, to make sure we did everything good for the community, keep people safe, keep operations going, and yet making the community proud for the work we're doing throughout that. But I know today we're going to go through some of the good, maybe the bad, and some of the ugly possibly. But I would say that there's a lot of really great work I feel that has happened. And I know we're talking about the town administrator evaluation, but I do want to emphasize none of the things that we've talked about or have shared or will talk about today, possible, without every single person on our team here at Town Hall, boards, commissions, select board especially, and the community. It's all really come together in a very nice way. And again, I'm just very proud of the service community, excited for the opportunity I've been given. And I'm excited for tonight to talk about some of the things we've done. We're also talking about the ways we continue to grow and be better out of this office and continue to do hopefully great things for this community.
Thank you, Kevin. To get us started, we want to, and I turn first to our Vice Chair, Marshall.
So obviously, I come into this with a slightly different frame of references. Most of my colleagues here, in fact, all of my colleagues in that I've lived here in this town for far less time than anybody, I think, probably in this entire town at this point. And in my role on the select board, I have no experience in working with any other town administrator. So I don't have a person to compare you against or a performance or type of town administrator to compare you against, so I'm comparing you only against you. And I think it probably is not a shocking surprise to know that I'm quite impressed. I find generally you're full of ideas, full of energy, and proactive. You know, in my professional life, as I mentioned to you one-on-one yesterday, I've spoken to town administrators all across the state. Now granted, when I'm talking to them, they most likely are not having their best day. But I have found a wide variety of different kinds of personalities, and some are combative, some are unwilling, some are unenergetic. And I imagine that should I have ever found the opportunity to call you in that kind of role, that it would have been a very good conversation. In terms of our role here, I find that it, I imagine anyway, or I know that there are town administrator who just sit back and wait for instruction, wait for it in order, wait, you know, well, I'm just waiting for the select board to tell me what to do, and then I'll go do it. And I feel as though that flow of ideas is more often than not coming the other way. You're coming to us with ideas. You've got big ideas, and I think that's tremendous. That's one of my favorite things about you. And they're innovative, new ideas. I mean, this is a small town and a very, very, very old town, and so innovation in Topsfield probably is not a combination that a lot of people think of, but I love it, and I love that we're headed in that direction. You've given us six pages of accomplishments, and they're all very impressive. I'm just going to kind of highlight some of the ones that are of particular interest to me and things that I came onto the select board to accomplish. So it's kind of kind of dovetail what you've done with what I'm specifically looking to do. For instance, economic development is huge, commercial development, economic development. And I think that's an area that obviously we have a lot of work left to do. But even just in my year on the board, I know that you are very quick to talk with businesses to, you know, if somebody comes in and is even thinking about, well, maybe I might want to do something in Topsfield, very quick to talk with them. So that terms of communication in that way is great. The ECDC has been founded under your watch, and I think that that's a group of people who are very active and eager to do things, and that's great. I love grant money. I love grant money so much. Free money is fantastic. And when we talk about the shared streets grants and what we've seen in terms of the solar lights and the parquetts and all of that kind of downtown beautification, that's great. Wayfinding is still obviously a work in progress, but I like where we are. We've got these EV charging stations right outside this window. And in terms of doing new things and being modern in Topsfield, I think that's, that's great. Obviously, everyone in this room knows that I love to talk about communication. I have found you to be exceedingly responsive to citizens. We are working together on getting that website improved. The traffic advisory committee isn't directly communication, but it is in that that's something that people come in with concerns, and there's now a place where they can look at it. And I know that, you know, as a, as a member of the select board, one of the things I hear a lot about are speeders and stop signs and things like that. I like what we've done with the IT improvements, the regionalization and the fiber network. Obviously, we all work together on the organizational kind of operations of the different commissions coming into the central office. Your time here has probably been, most notably, COVID intensive. Like, when you signed up for this job, I'm, I don't know where we were in COVID, but it wasn't a thing really, really yet. And I got to tell you, while all of this is impressive, the ability to, to bring this town through COVID, not that we're at the other end yet, but, you know, God willing, we're mostly there, to do it with balanced budgets, to do it with this town bringing in less money while needing to do more, to deal with the CARES grants and get all of that money, I think has been tremendous. I know that I heard from people who loved the robo calls and the amount of communication the town was doing around COVID. Obviously, it was a time where people were scared about everything. And the more information is always good. As you and I discussed yesterday, I think we've had 438 union contracts that you've had to renegotiate in the last year. And I think just about every one of them's done, and I think every one of them is probably a little bit better than it was before. And a lot of staff overhaul. So as I look at that six pages, that's kind of the stuff that, that was particularly impressive to me. And there are a lot of things in there that I think are works in progress. You know, obviously, there's the start of a lot of things. And so there are areas that, there was some progress made on, but I, that I would want to focus. I know that we want to get that master plan done and continue to find support for that. Obviously, the old highway garage and the plans for that will move into the next phase. I would love to see us find some way around affordable housing and working on a policy there. Communications transparency will never stop being a thing I talk about. The recreational department and recreation director. And I still think we need to talk about some policies around the ambulance, the building, the copays and all of that. So that's all the good stuff. I do think there are a couple of areas where I think you can work on stuff. And the biggest one for me is, is twofold. It's time management, but for two different reasons. One, I love the work you're doing, so I don't want you to quit in a year because you're tired of working eighty-hour weeks. And so, you know, and I think a big part of that was COVID and all of the extra work that came with that. But I would love, I mean, I, I'm not married to you, but I would imagine if I were, I wouldn't be happy with the hours you're keeping at work. So I would love if you could find a little more balance in, I mean, it sounds odd, you think that we would want somebody who just works 160 hours a week, but I don't want that because I don't think that's sustainable, and I want you to be sustainable. And I also think that when you are working that much on so many different things, that it does leave you open to the possibility of some things getting missed. I would love for you to fix up your email inbox. So there, you know, there are some emails that probably have gotten missed. I feel your pain. As I mentioned to you, I get 300 of them a day, so I know what an email inbox like that looks like. We just need to make sure we can find a way that the, I'll give you an example from my workday yesterday. I worked nine hours. Great day, all day long. As I'm walking to my car, I get a phone call about the one thing we missed, and then that defined my day. It wasn't the nine hours of good work that was done. It was literally the one thing that was missed at the end of the day that then defined my entire workday. And I feel like there are things that can be missed that can take this much good work, and then it's going to be that one thing that, that's going to define it. And it's unfortunate, but, so I would love to be able to find a little more in terms of time management and organization. So that's where I am.
Great, thank you. Kevin, any response to anything that Marshall shared?
Well, just thank you for the, the support, the kind remarks. I'd say the top, just I enjoy the work tremendously. There certainly are a lot of hours, and I appreciate pointing to that. And my wife, maybe she'll be able to tune in, will appreciate it even more to hear that during the review. And I definitely agree. One thing Debbie and I talked about before is, you know, the volume of emails kind of. It is sometimes a challenge when you're going from the start of the day to the end of day, meetings, meetings, deadline, deadline, and you try to catch up in between on those emails. But there have certainly been those ones where I have responded a little later than I would want otherwise. And so I definitely think you hit the nail on the head with that, and certainly something I can strive to improve over the next year.
Thanks, Kevin. We'll move to Mr. Jackson.
Well, following that, I don't have much more to add. I, I've been impressed with Kevin from day one. I was on the selection committee, and, and that's where the impressive opinion began. I'm excited about his creativity. I'm excited about the fact that he doesn't need us to tell him what to do tomorrow. He's done some wonderful things. I, I think, and I've said this before to this group, I think that hiring Kevin Hartunian was the best thing we've done for the town of Topsfield in 20 years. And I, you know, I could zero in maybe on some, some short, or some, some points that need to be cleaned up a little bit. And the biggest one I would guess is the, the time management. I can't tell you how many times I've told him to get your ass out of here and go home with your wife and three little daughters, okay? And he doesn't listen to me because he doesn't go home. But that's an issue, I think. I'm concerned about burnout. I'm concerned about the fact that in a year or two, you're going to say, hey, I've had enough of this. Now, back to the fact when we hired him, he'd never had a job like this. He had never done a budget. He had never done a town meeting. And he had very short period of time to get ready for that. And he jumped into it. I, I think it was a little bit rocky maybe in the beginning, but he got it done, working with the staff and FinCom, and got it done well, in my opinion. This past town meeting was better than his first one, probably. But he's learning as he goes, and he's done a great job of moving into the position and taking and on his own, and that's the way it should be. We've had two town administrators before Kevin. One of them was an elderly lady that was ready for retirement, a wonderful person. But the kind of stuff you're doing was, was beyond her, in my opinion. And then we went to Kelly. Kelly was the next one. Nowhere nearly the creativity that you could be brought to the job, the ability to do things on her own. So that was not a mistake, in my opinion, moving on beyond Kelly Hubert. Like I said, you've done everything that I would hope for and more, and I will continue to support you to the ultimate.
Thank you, Boyd. Any comments, Kevin?
Thank you. I think I've, I've said this before when I, it's kind of funny. Today, when I came into the room before we started, I felt like it was October 19 when I was interviewing, coming to the room with everybody here to talk about myself. But I just want to say, and I've said it before, when I sat down after the interview process, which Mr. Jackson was a part of during the selection, uh, screening committee, I sat down with John Spencer and Mr. Jackson, and we had a really great conversation. For me,
Right in there.
Right in there on the table. That, for me, would be over the top. I wasn't a hundred percent certain what I was going to do at that point. And when I heard about the vision, the passion, the support, the team, that I'd be inherited, those words, those times, those moments that we spent together, and subsequently driving around town in the BMW, looking at the different spots in town.
We still haven't finished that.
We do, we have to get coffee again. But that, those were moments that I remember and I'll remember forever because those are the things that, when you're first taken on a new opportunity, knowing you have people you certainly respect, you've looked a great way about them. You represented the select board incredibly well when we were having those moments, and a big part of why I'm here today. So thank you for the support and thank you for those opportunities.
Thanks, Kevin.
I would just make one additional comment. When we were involved in the screening process, we had two people that we were screening. Kevin was one of them. And he showed up with a list of what he was going to do in the first hundred days. And he alludes to that in his accomplishments here. But that was so impressive, the fact that he would take the time to figure out what he was going to do in the first hundred days.
Thank you. That was a big, that was a big deal.
Thank you, Boyd. Mr. Gant.
I heard the word creativity, and that is a good start for how well Kevin does doing. He did not wait. Yes, he has creative ideas and brings them forward, and that's very refreshing to have that. We appreciate that. So we had this discussion about the document that you prepared. Just for anybody who's listening, that is on the board docs for the last meeting that we had. Is that right, Debbie? I think it was posted for the last meeting.
Yes.
That, these things. So that was the 12th of, just this past Monday. So it's posted in front of me, and it wants to see those quote "six pages." But the bulk of the six pages are the town's goals as we set them. They weren't Kevin's goals, they were the goals that we had set. But they fall very logically into the sorts of things that you did. So we really wind up talking a lot about those goals and how they, how they come out. Now, in our actual process, we're going to go through this, and then we're going to continue the dialogue, or?
Yes.
We only get one shot? Yeah, I don't get one.
You'll have another shot.
I just make sure that I understood the process. So the, the five key goals, actually, the board had more than this as far as a list of things that we were interested in. But the five key goals that we had identified, economic development, communications transparency, IT improvements, improve organizational operations, and enhance financials. So those are key areas that we felt, and that we moved on. And just going down through them then. On the economic development, reach out to the businesses. You've done an excellent job there. For a long time, we were hoping that there would be a, some sort of a business council of some sort within Topsfield, and it never really seemed to come about. But I think you've helped provide a certain amount of encouragement for them to feel somewhat of a relationship amongst themselves with the town, along with the town. So that's been a healthy move under the economic development. And then, of course, the use of grants to improve the appearance of the downtown, whether it be the lamps, the streetlights that are put in, or flowers that, that are up there. They come from various sources, the grants, whatever they are. Some local grants, but also most of it is from the government grants that we have. Well-used to make the downtown look good. And I understand from our meeting on Monday that we're also going to be adding a solar bench, so there's one more creative item that's been put into the mix, and that looks good. So I think the downtown, from my point of view, certainly, and I measure most people, certainly looks better than it did a year ago, without a question. We've done a lot of cleanup. And one of those cleanups has been those extra signs that were all around. And not only did we get those things cleaned up, but you've kept them cleaned up. It's like weeds, you know, they kind of grow. But ours haven't grown, so thank you for that. In the case of transparency and communications, you've done a great open house. I think it was one thing that you did, but it was an open house for all citizens to come in and say hi, and I think you had a nice turnout on that. That's just a healthy sort of thing, to get things kicked off. That was probably just before COVID, so you made it just as hard. One of the last events upstairs in the town, in the town hall there. And I was particularly happy with the results of the PFA, PFA S community outreach. So this is the water, the water and the concern about having certain amounts of PFASs in the, in the water, which are associated with sorts of certain contaminant. But that went extremely well. I think that the way people were able to ask questions and get answers, that's the sort of level of quality that I think we all seek. And I think that was clearly in that particular one. I had the sense of transparency, that, you know, somebody asked a question, we were there to, you were there, the right people were there to provide the answers in as transparent a way that we could. And I've heard that it went fairly well. I'm sure there were some people who wished maybe more, but as far as I know, it went quite well from other people's view. My view, it was excellent. And then was mentioned also the use, I think someone mentioned the use of, I'm going to call it reverse 911. Not a rule. This is a lying term. But the use of, of reverse 911 for elections and for the annual town meeting, excellent. And to use it for, it is an emergency. And then one of the things we have to be careful of is not to overuse it so that people have a sense that this is important if I hear something come in like that. And I think we've been in that mode. As far as IT improvements, use of the grants to implement two things, the fiber ring and the phone system throughout the town. That fiber ring is kind of subtle. People drive up and down the streets and whatever else, and it doesn't mean anything. They walk into town hall, it doesn't mean anything. But it does tie our communications together. And it's a base for doing a better job. And it was a base for being able to tie our phone system together because here and for, we have one at the library, one here, one highway department, whatever. Now they're able to be interconnected, and you took advantage of that with the new phone system at the same time. So I think that that is clearly an IT improvement that you were able to achieve. Then it was mentioned the COVID things that were going on here. You implemented work at home, and that ain't the easiest thing to do. And it was done on the fly, and it worked out. I know you needed a lot of help and equipment and things like that to make it happen, but I was impressed with how we were able to do that. And we don't want that to go away because there are times when that may be very helpful. If somebody is somewhat sick or they're able to work, but they prefer not to come in because they don't feel well. We don't want people spreading any viruses around, so it's very easy to say, but I'll do my work at home. So that's, it's good in place, very important for COVID, but good to have in place. Thank you. And improve operational, improve organizational operations. One of the great things that we, we, we've worked for many years working towards direct deposit. And we finally did get that. Oh, it's important.
Took us years to get it done.
And it takes, it affects people directly. Direct deposit is how they get their money, whether they get it in cash and check or whatever. Or they get it electronically. And so we have that direct deposit. And I was delighted when I read this because not only did we do direct deposit, but those slips that go out, and you have to kind of give them to everybody and things like that, have apparently gone away because we're doing it with email. And that's a great improvement in the process because it saves the people here at town hall time and not having to go around and do that, and the recipients, because they don't have to worry about, did I get my slip? Oh, no, I can get it now here at home. So I think those are the kinds of improvements that are excellent. The enhanced financials, and you mentioned this one. You made it through two town meetings with two budgets, FY 2021 and FY 2022, and we have no overrides. So those are, those are good things. I know it takes, this is not yours alone. It takes everybody pulling on that. But, and the finance committee was certainly very much involved with that, and greatly appreciated being able to do that. And at the same time, one other thing, which is just good solid dollars, is refinancing of the water department debt, which was able, we were able to do that. It was callable, and so we could do that and save $25,000 a year in debt service for the next four years or something of that nature. So we're taking pocket that, and that's, those are good things. So lots of good things that have been accomplished along the way. And I think then we want to talk more. I heard the issue of time management. I have that down as one of my considerations for you. We'll talk more about this before, before it's over. But let me introduce the thought of being able to delegate in some cases to improve your ability to not have to work. to improve your ability to not have to work as many hours, to take advantage of what other people might be able to do. But with that, I'd like to hold off and turn to Cam. Or to win.
Sure. Any comments, Kevin, before we move on to?
Say, big thank you. Thank you for, you know, a lot of, a lot of the things you mentioned, the particulars. There's an army behind us that made it happen. Jackie, Donna, Debbie, the chiefs. Just, you know, the very specific ones, like just coming from, to a paperless model. You know, that's one where Jackie and her team, we talked about that early on, and they executed it. So just big kudos to all the support we have here in Topsfield to make those things happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Cam?
Thanks. Kevin, so you said you're 19 months in. I'm about seven weeks in. So my comments have to be a little thoughtful and a little retrospect of the fact that I wasn't here for a lot of, you know, sort of how your work was set up and so on. That being said, I consider myself a pretty good judge of work ethic, of character, which you embody both to an extraordinary factor. And it started, my first exposure to you was either the end of January, beginning of February, when I was first considering running. And you took time, but the funny thing was that I figured I'd just call you and you'd say, sure, let's talk. Getting an appointment with you to talk about this job took me, I think, four days because you're the busiest person I've ever met. I run a small business, and, you know, it's, it's nothing compared to what you do in terms of, you look at that list, and it's, it's pretty mind-blowing. But I've now been to four select board meetings, and I've been to, I think, three or four working sessions. And during that time, you've been focused primarily, at least what you shared with a lot of us, you've been focused on the police negotiations for the full-time and the reserve, the AFSCME negotiations. And I won't get into the specifics that were said there, but I was very impressed with the tenor of not only what you took as some of the most important points in those contracts. You listened to this team about when they, you know, pushed back and said, these are areas that we think you can, you can push harder. You listened, you went back, and you did it. And equally importantly to me is the chemistry and trust that I saw you and Chief Hovey have together. And, and I think after 19 months, that's pretty extraordinary. It's also pretty important for this town because the well-being of this town, the safety of this town, is paramount. And I, I know you believe that, and I know you're working towards that with the chief. And I thought your sort of overall approach to me was summarized with, look, we're all in this together, not to sound too fright, but I mean, I think everything you do is through the optics of Topsfield, and optics in a good way. Optics means what do we have to do to make these contracts right, to make this town right? So the negotiation is extraordinary for a guy of your experience. I heard someone say a couple of different times, we're learning on that, or you're learning on the job here. I thought, Jesus, you strike me as someone who's been to TA for his career. You know, just, just with the confidence with which you do things. The other thing that I've been struck by is you are a sound and fiscally responsible individual. You also take equal delight in a grant from the Institute for Savings for $1,500 for that as you do saving $8,000 on negotiating landfill management, or saving $8,000 on Powell and Stevens, I think it is, which I love. I think that's great. Couple people have mentioned grants, and grants are important, and spending other people's money is a, is a good thing. And you seem to be able to turn over rocks with the help of your staff and find those opportunities. And we're all grateful for it, and it's so important for the well-being of the town. And, and I'd love to see how much fun you seem to have while you're doing that. And, you know, speaking of fiscal responsibility, I know that, you know, you were offered an increased stipend at a point along your contract, and maybe turned part of that back. And I think that's extraordinary. And, and I don't think the monetary is what's important. It's the signal you're sending to everybody here, and I'm really impressed with that. That was very, very impressive to me. You know, I think my final thought, this is difficult because I don't want to replicate or duplicate anything I've heard here, so kind of bother to weave in here. But I, I think what we all have to consider is, as your managers, is how much management do you need? And at what point are we hampering the process? You know, what, at what point are we demoralizing the individual with too much oversight or too much management? And, you know, in my two months of observation of you, you know, I think you are an incredibly sound and mature thinker who's got big ideas, who's innovative and understands how to implement technology for innovation, who probably knows a lot more about technology and implementation than most people in this room. And I think there's a, you know, I, I think we have to be cautious not to quell your creativity in any way whatsoever. You need rain, man, you know? And, you know, you need to be able to, you need to be able to throttle down and run. So in closing, I'm terribly impressed with what I've seen so far, and I can't wait to see what you got. And thank you.
Thank you. I very much.
Oh, pardon me. Development areas. I totally forgot about that, well, I was so excited.
You were this close.
And it's funny, because everyone said the same thing, and in my, in my notes, I've said the same thing also about you. And thinking about you, you know, time management is important, but time management also, I would even, I would take it a step further, and I would think about your portion of the town meetings, town meetings, pardon me, the board meetings, the monthly, slum board meetings. I think you've got a lot to say, and I think you know a lot. And I think you have to work on succinct language and reeling yourself in a little bit. Because you know a lot, and several people around this table have actually stopped you because you've answered a question, but you keep on going. There's no adage about when someone says yes, you shut the heck up. So, you know, you, it, it's, it's a development area, it's not a criticism. It's, it's, it's a good thing because you know what the heck you're talking about. Anyway, pardon me. Your floor.
No, I, Mr. Hook pointed out earlier something I definitely, with the management of the emails specifically. And I think, you know, when I first came on, John Spencer, I have a deep grief sometimes after the meetings, you know, he'd say, keep it short, keep it short. So it's always been in the back of my mind that sometimes the motor starts going, and I'm getting really excited about something, and I can find myself kind of going a little bit longer than probably necessary. But I'm glad you pointed that out because it's certainly a place that I think I could be a little more consciously aware of as I go through those TA boards, or just in general, conversing or presenting. So appreciate that. And thank you for all the comments earlier as well.
Very concise.
You heard it. Nice close.
All right, thank you, Cam. To Cam's point, I don't want to duplicate what other people have said because a lot of examples have been given. But I'll point out two areas. First, I'll say I am so thrilled with what you have been doing, Kevin. And, and I tell you that all the time. I'm very impressed. One area that I think is particularly strong is your people skills. And that impacts so many areas of being a town administrator and getting things done because this is a people business. I have seen you go into meetings where people are of the exact opposite opinion, and by the end of that meeting, they have moved completely over to where you are. Or some have not, but they're still not upset. They felt heard, they, they understand your point of view. You made them feel as if their opinion mattered, and you were comfortable moving forward with whatever was being proposed, which is so important because, you know, the next project is coming around the following week or the following month, and you're gonna need those same people to work with. And that's across the board from when Dick mentioned the relationships that you've built with the businesses, to all of the departments that you're working with, to people in town. What springs to mind is Coppermine. That was a group of people who were very upset with the condition of their road that had been going on for a long time, nobody had paid attention. And your creativity kicked in, your ability to get something done quickly, with Gary coming in and, and doing the paving, so that there was a short-term solution and a longer term. And you kept those people with you, all the residents, vanished of the path you were taking, and you got it communicated at town meeting. So you have an ability to pick up and meet people where they are, let them feel heard, and bring them along the path, which I just think is fantastic. Also, at the people skills, you've had a lot of new people in town hall. When you came on, you had two big department heads, the treasurer and the highway superintendent, who were new. And being able to work with them, get them comfortable with the job, build that relationship, and help them grow and move forward, along with 11 new hires. That's a lot. That's a lot of new people to bring on board, you know, interviewing skills, being able to assess the strengths of people. You have very good emotional intelligence, and I think that shows itself in so many aspects. The other thing is I've had the pleasure of being able to work with you on a more detailed level in several capacities, whether it's the ECDC or in my role as chair. There's a lot more communication that goes on. And there are a lot of things probably that a lot of people don't see that are just happening behind the scenes that add to that workload that Kevin just handles. He just takes it on and gets it done to keep things moving forward. One of the things that probably people didn't know, but we did have a fine levying against us for $45,000 because of a late submission prior to Kevin's arrival in the tax arena. $45,000 that he managed to get down to zero. And that is people's skills, reaching out to the right people, discussing, handling it, and probably not a lot of people knew we even had that situation come up. So that was just one of many things that are behind the scenes that people probably don't know about. And I'm so impressed with his work with the downtown revitalization. There are so many moving pieces to that, and while it may look like it takes a little while to get things going, that was such a Herculean effort. Even the work that he's doing now with the old highway garage, that he's proactively reaching out to developers in other towns and people who own businesses to get them to come in to take a look at the location and see what would work, what's feasible, so that all of that information can go into developing the RFP. And he's also pursuing a grant to get technical assistance with that RFP, so that we do it right. He's worked with the brokers of the Village Shopping Center to talk to them about backfilling the Santander building with potentially something that's more attractive to the town than a bank. And this is all just proactively, he's reaching out to make sure that the wheels, you know, get moving and the right things happen, that, you know, all happens behind the scenes. So I'm very impressed. Anything else that you wanted to mention that people might not know? You know, I, I think your ability to handle multiple projects at the same time and keep them straight in your head is amazing. I mean, when we look at this list and the number of things that are so vastly different from one another, Cam mentioned, you are booked all day. So you're going from a union negotiation to a resident problem, to trying to bring in a new business, to handling employee issue, and each time you're, you're right on top of it. If I look in the area of development, it's, I think, the same that Cam and Marshall had said. And I think it's a couple of factors coming to bear. So the time management ties into prioritization of what things really focus on because you have so many ideas and so many opportunities are out, are out there that it's a matter of kind of paring them down because you can't possibly work on everything. As Marshall said, it will burn well completely, so. And to the point about, which is funny, it was the same thing I was gonna mention, Cam, about the concise language. You have a great ability to communicate a vision and ideas and make people feel heard. It just has to be done probably a little more concisely. And I don't think you have two seconds of downtime to think ahead of time, to prepare, and, and think things down to being concise, because you are going from one thing to the other. So then it's a little stream of consciousness, and there's so many ideas and so many thoughts you have, they just all start to come out. So if you had a little more time to devote to that, I think it's not gonna be an issue at all being more concise in your communications.
I'd like to say this, though. You know, John Spencer, when he served as chair, he was the first person I worked with in that capacity. Built a great relationship, a bond. He was so supportive and helpful. And when he passed, you know, it stuck, he was a friend, he was a mentor. And when you took over as the chair, I just want to say you've done an absolutely fantastic job of the partnership. All the things that we've talked about, accomplishments, partnerships. It's because of the board, it's because of the support, the relationships we've built to get things done. And it takes a leader from the board who I get to work with, I think we talk multiple times a day on average, to help make those things happen and get the support and sometimes guidance. And I just want to thank you for the work you're doing to support me in your capacity as the chair. It's been very good. I, I think it's been incredibly helpful to me, and the friendship means a lot, so thank you.
Thank you, it's been my pleasure. Marshall and I were talking, we were saying, we can be a part of the problem here. I mean, you're, you're so willing to sit down with us and talk if we have ideas we want to share, that it's like I know you don't have an hour or an hour and a half just sitting there as an open block of time for me when I cut my head in, and yet you make that time. And I probably pushed everything else back, so I think we have to be conscious also that we're not encroaching on that time that you have, and that we're not being part of the problem instead of being there as, you know, supportive or part of the solution.
You're saying when I spent an hour and a half yesterday telling him he needed to better manage his company? While emails were just streaming by.
So, so before we move on to, Kevin, you were providing us with some recommendations or input as to how we could be a more effective team from your perspective, or what we could stop doing or help you and your team do. Before we get there, are there any final points that the board would verbally like to make that they feel they didn't have a chance to cover, that they have another thought?
I, I made a couple of notes that I'd like to comment about, just very quickly. Team building, in my opinion, has been one of your strong suits. You've done a great job of that. You walked into this job not knowing any of those folks, and you had some personnel turnover. You responded to that well. I can tell you that the, that the attitude in town hall before you came along was not really all that good, in my opinion, in some people's eyes. But I think you've turned that around. I don't hear any grumbling anymore, we used to hear it a lot. How you, how you can spend as much time as you do, as successfully as you do writing grants is amazing to me because you've done a tremendous job with it. You drive down the main street, and you can see a lot of it. It's a result of grant work. I'm concerned about your longevity. I'm concerned about whether or not we can keep you in the town of Topsfield. I, I hear people talk about the fact that it's typical for a young town administrator to hold a job for a year or two, and the first thing you know is somebody comes along and offers you more money and more support and all that, and they're gone. So I'm concerned about that. I'm concerned about whether or not we can keep you excited and, and paid to the level that you're comfortable with so that we don't lose you 20 years from now. I, I want to comment a little bit about public opinion that I hear people talk about. I, I've talked to people that both know a little bit about town government and a lot of people that don't know a thing about town government. But they've interfaced with you, and the comments are generally very favorable. People come away impressed with your ability to handle their concerns and their needs and their desires. And having, having the public opinion that you've developed is important, in my opinion. That's all. Thank you.
If I could mention something just about the grants, when you mentioned how impressed you are with what Kevin is doing, I think that also points to his leadership and his ability to inspire his team. He was talking to me earlier about the number of grants that have gone up and the percentage that are coming from his department heads, not him personally. I don't know if you want to share those numbers, Kevin?
Sure. So I did a quick analysis just to kind of get a sense for how we're doing our grants, because we've, we've... because we've, we've, it was talking with actually Catherine, and she tracks the grants because a lot of that ends up with the accounting's office. And she's, the activity's been much greater, so I did a quick analysis of the annual reports and some other data points I had. We have nine grants that we applied for successfully or competitive in fiscal twenty by five different departments. And in fiscal twenty-one, we had nineteen successful competitive grants that we received from eight different departments of the sixteen. So we've increased the number of department heads who are, that's, the dollars are great, the dollars will always come if we're doing it, but it takes us actually doing it and be motivated to try to source them. So to your point, you know, the grant numbers, we're getting grants that we've been successful with is a result of people, I think, being excited about the concept and getting behind the concept of, you know, carving out a little extra time to go source a grant, write a grant and then be successful. When you go through the process, it's pretty neat, especially when you get something back and you get something for the department or for the town that's, that's worthwhile. But to go from, and in fiscal nineteen, it was four departments that received competitive grants, so we doubled it in a couple of years, the number of people in different departments. We've done it in departments, it was one of the nice things I, I remember, our town clerk, what else, applied for a grant for ballot machines, uh, ballot.
No, machine?
Not the machine, but the, 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 the air you vote, the booth, the booth.
Yes, yes.
Booth. I didn't write the grant, so if I did, I maybe I wouldn't know what it's called. But she applied for it and she was so excited for the grant and when she got it back, she like came down and said, and that's, that's the best part of it, right? And it wasn't a hundred thousand dollar grant, it was a couple thousand dollars, but that excitement for her to go out there, to proactively do it, to recognize it was an opportunity, something we all want to see happen and do it on our own, get that grant back successfully and see the expression on her face that, you know, she, how successful she was, that's what it's all about.
That's what a leader does, you know? It inspires others. She model it and then inspire them because you couldn't possibly do it all yourself.
That's a reflection of your team building capability.
Thank you. Yeah. And we're very fortunate. I said this early on when I started to get to know our, our department heads and our staff, just right up and down. I mean, Thompson's different and in a really great way. You know, there's just a great sense of teamwork, community, and that, one of my goals as, as the leader there is to try to make it so when the person gets up in the morning, they're excited from the work every day. Sometimes that's hard in this board because sometimes it can be repetitive, but those other things that you can do, supporting people, having recognition when people do something well, like that is an example, hopefully those are the things that motivate people, make people want to stay, make people appreciate what they're doing. If you feel good about what you're doing, you feel supported, that your work is making a difference somehow, that's what really inspires, I think, people to produce their best. And I, I'm just very grateful because again, I didn't have the team we had. We'd probably have a different discussion today, but if you talk about the things that we've been able to accomplish. So I'm just very grateful for those people behind all the work there.
Just another thought I had that I, I think is really impressive, the amount of legwork and options and financial analysis that went on is with the police reform. That was something that was outside of our control that came down and the work that you and Chief Hovey have been doing to analyze the different options, the scenarios, the risks to the town and the direction to head in have been very impressive.
That was a tremendous amount of work.
And Chief's done fantastic. She started at the end of April, right when, you know, COVID was sitting at stride and some of the social justice, police reform was starting to get some, some legs. We've had, you know, some turnover of the police department and he's just done an outstanding job navigating all those challenges that come up. And, you know, I, I, it's great, you said this, about the chemistry and collaboration.
Trust was very, very.
You know, it's important that the department heads, whether it's chief or somebody else, knows that, you know, let's roll up our sleeves together and find a solution to a problem. You're not in it on your own, you don't have to go, you're not an island. You know, if you go in front of the board or the public or whatever it may be, let's talk about beforehand, let's understand it and then let's go out together. So that's sort of the approach we, we try to instill within the team as much as possible. So, but yeah, there's, that was, that was a challenge and I remember compounding that a little bit was the fact that we were in negotiations with both unions simultaneously. So we're trying to negotiate deals that are going to be for three years while we have all this uncertainty. So we, Chief did a just fantastic job thinking about an analysis, doing an analysis around the different options so that we could, and really go into negotiations even and really have a conversation with the guys and with the women because that's what should be and just be very transparent as much as possible when we're talking with them, not just about how much stipend they're going to get or whatever, but just generally how they want to operate and how they play because it goes back to what I said at the beginning, you know, it's about trust and wanting to come to work every day and knowing you have people behind you.
Any other comments?
Just kind of a follow up. We've talked about it a couple of times now, this idea of the time manager, but importantly, what you brought up, Lynn, was the idea of prioritization. So it's not simply a matter of doing everything you do in a more efficient way or whatever, but it's selecting those things which are the higher priority than the others. And interestingly enough, that immediately then falls upon the board of selectmen and you should come to us, you know, if there's some issues, ask the, which are the priorities here? What should I be spending how much time on, so to speak? Because some of the things might be more nice to do than other things which we might feel the other way. And so that's our responsibility to you, but you, you come to talk to us too and say, now I get too much to do with these priorities, which ones do I throw off so I can get, get the time back down? But in that regard, I, I did mention the idea of being able to delegate some things. I, I think that would help a lot. So perhaps the, the question becomes, well, you know, what's an example of something that you, they want to delegate? We had the situation of the clock tower here and worked out, everything was all worked out and the two people were ready to go, we knew what was going on and you insisted upon having a meeting. Granted, your schedule was long, so it took a week and a half to get it scheduled, but in that timeframe, they're waiting to figure out, you know, what am I going to hear from Kevin that's any different than what we've already worked out that we're going to do? So I would give that as one example of where certainly with time manager, I think you could have done a, you can do a better job on your part in that regard. And another one, when I had worked this out with Lynn, I'm not sure how it happened, is we were going into town meeting, we knew that there were some problems, we found a number of problems in the website that didn't match. And that's a time when people were going to be, theoretically, they're going to town meeting, look at the warrant, but then they may want to look at the budget and things like that. And so we decided that since you were very busy, we can very quickly get along with, because someone was almost editing kinds of things, oh, it says the wrong date on it, it's the wrong year, whatever. And the next thing I know, you're creating a team to go fix the problems. Well, it's okay if, if, if that's, but that means there are other things that are not getting done, so I guess that you didn't think it was valuable to give it off and get it done. So those are just a couple of examples, but I do think you want to think about the extent to which you're willing to trust other people to perhaps get things done or report back to you on, or whatever the case may be. I'd like to, because we have talked about this, but for all of us to talk about, the desire to have what would typically be referred to as completed staff work, in other words, the stuff that comes to us, the quality of it, when an MOU comes to us, it ought to be pretty clean. Now, maybe the, the issues in it are not all clean, but the stuff that's in it should be just correct, not, and it shouldn't be confusing, so to speak. And we had had that problem recently with the ASME, but it's not something new. Back, I remember this time last year was, was the end of